Twenty one, Daniel, if you wanna, if you wanna pray first, I'll let Daniel pray first if you want to.
Now, we just wanna come before you and ask that you would just allow this time again to be a time where we are collecting on your word and not just hearing, but we become followers of your word as we study God. I pray that it would go in our hearts and that we would move into action on what you're telling us here. When it says to have faith, then you hope us to have faith. When it says to be obedient, hope us to be obedient. And I pray that you would just, it would be more than words today. And I pray, Lord, I thank you that so many are feeling better. And I continue to pray health over all the people here. You would just, um, just, just bring your, your healing to those who are still being untouched from you, Lord. Pray this and do this thing. Amen.
So we'll start off at ten twenty one. It was chapter ten, verse twenty one, I, I think, is what you said, right, Daniel? So I, I'm gonna go back up to twenty to start, or nineteen, I guess. There was a division there for him. If you wanna explain where he was at, there were only four people last time. So if you wanna explain it, you can explain what happened before these verses, so we guys kinda know where we're at.
Alright.
So we, we're here.
Okay, it's the beginning of chapter ten. And I'm gonna be recording our side, so don't worry. Um, but on the beginning of chapter ten, we find that Jesus makes another one of those statements where he says the I am statement. This one is, I am the good shepherd. And so chapter ten kind of goes into explaining what exactly a good shepherd would do. So if you were here, you remember, we kind of talked about this in parallel to Psalm twenty three, which is one that we all know where Jesus, or where David writes, where is my shepherd? I shall not want. Well, those are types, types of things that a good shepherd would take care, a good shepherd would make sure that there is food and water for the sheep. A good shepherd would make sure that the, that the sheep are protected. And it talks to him here that he is the gate. Jesus says that he is the gate. And back in those days, when the sheep would be out on the pasture, and maybe not at home, but out on the pasture somewhere, he would do his best to kind of make it a circular camp, and the shepherd would lay at the door front. So that anything that came in the right way, or went out the right way, would go through him. And so Jesus is saying, this is me as well. I am that gate. And if someone tries to jump the gate, then you know that that person is a thief or a robber. But if that person comes in through the gate, then you know that they are right, because I don't let them in if they're safe, and I'll keep them out if they are dangerous. So Jesus is making that parallel here, as he's talking to them, saying, I am that sheep, or that, that shepherd. I am the one who is going to take care of you, protect you, feed you, and give you everything you need, and keep all the bad stuff out. But he points to the fact that it has to do with the relationship. If you are in me, if you have a relationship with me, then I am your shepherd. If you are refusing me, I can't protect you, because you're not in my fold.
So then we're gonna start, I'll start at nineteen here. Uh, ten nineteen. Uh, there was a division there among the Jews who were these same marks. Many of them said, he has a devil who had a crazy, why fear him? Others said, these are not the words of them that has a devil. Can a devil open the eyes of the blind? I should pull it, pull it, right? Yeah, chapter nine was, yeah, where he, he killed the blind, blind man. That's what we're talking about here. And others, others say that the devil opened the eyes of the blind, and it was Jerusalem, the peace of dedication, and it was clearer. Jesus talked in the temple in Solomon's porch, in Solomon's porch. Let's see. Then came the Jews round about him, and said unto him, how long dost thou make us doubt? That thou be the Christ, tell us plainly. So they're, they're, they're really doubting him. Some of them are really doubting that he is the Messiah, that he is the Christ, but they want, and while they wouldn't want all this proof that they've already had, you know, kind of smack in Jesus' face a little bit, but they want more proof than what they, you know, done, healed the blind and everything else, made people walk. The left was seen and everything, everything. So Jesus answered them, and Jesus answered them, I told you, and ye believe not. Works that I do in my Father's thing, a bit witness of me. But ye believe not, because ye are not of my, not of my sheep, as I say, said unto them. So I think what he's saying is, is that the people that doubt him are not his sheep. They're the ones that he's talking about, trying to break through to get into the curb. That's, you know, he's trying to protect his people from these people because of that. So I, I, the way I read it, maybe I'm wrong here, but that's the way I feel, that my sheep hear my voice, and I know them, and they follow me. And he says it again, that he's telling them, that, you know, people know me, hear my voice, but and even, he's been dead for two thousand years, and, I mean, I think people can feel a nudge here or there, when they're, when they're praying and fasting and reading the Bible and stuff. They can feel a nudge that a way or this a way. I think you should do this. And you don't even know that's what's happening. But then you get nudged the way you should go, especially if you're living life of a Christ. So, and my sheep, and he's telling them, my sheep hear my voice, and I know them, and they follow me. And I give unto them eternal life, and they shall never, never perish. Neither shall any man fuck them out of my hand. So he's, he's telling them, he's gonna protect them no matter what. So if you believe in Christ and you die, you're gonna go in his camp. Nobody's gonna touch you. I mean, he's got you in his palm, in his, in his hand. So my Father, which gave them me, is greater than all, and no man is able to fuck them out of my Father's hand. I and my Father are one. And that comes back to the Trinity there. So he's, he's telling you that him, I and my Father are one. He sits in the right hand of the Father, and Jesus is the Father's son. So then the Jesus, so he gets stones, to stone him, to throw at him. Still didn't believe he was the Messiah. Jesus answered, answered them, many good works have I sowed you from my Father, but which of, which of those works did he stone me? So, like, done all this good work, then when it's stoned him, and he's, it's kind of like back with a lady that was a prostitute, and, you know, and, and Jesus bent down and was writing the sand, and he said, you know, you cast the first stone. That's basically, he's coming back to that again, and what have I done wrong? That you're gonna, you know, that you guys, you can't believe, you guys have sinned. I haven't, and, you know, so that's what I think he's trying to say there, I believe. If you wanna, you wanna go in, you can, you can up in there.
I'm gonna backtrack on some of your stuff.
Yeah, go ahead, fine, go ahead.
Uh, well, let's. So, a couple of things here, really, so we can kind of get the understanding of what's going on. Um, so Jesus is basically saying, look, the proof is in the pudding. They're asking him, are you the Messiah or not, right? And he said, the proof is in the pudding. I have shown you all these things. If you've chosen not to listen, or not to see the connection there, I'm sorry, but yes, I, I have shown you enough to make this conclusion. You should have already made it by now. But Jesus goes on, and, and like John was saying here, when we read, it says, uh, my sheep listen to my voice, I know them, and they follow me. Jesus is saying, there's three things, three qualifications, if you would, um, that point out those who are his sheep. And the first one, he said, they listen to my voice. Now, I wrote a whole book on this, Tom, on this one verse here, a whole book on this. Um, but if we go back to the Greek words, the word, uh, listen to my voice, that has a lot to do with where we get the word acoustics from. It's the Greek word aku, and it means that we are so tuned in to all the other sounds, meshing in with those sounds. And, and, and there's this, this voice that's coming out from that. And so if we take this from what Jesus is saying, it's, it's listening and tuning in to what he is saying. If we are in tune with the song of heaven or the voice that we are hearing of God, then that's one of the qualifications for being his sheep. And if we look at the disciples, and look at those who are falling after Jesus, one of the things that they were doing, those who decided that he was the Messiah, they were listening to his words. They were, in some aspects, comparing them to the prophecies from before and saying, hey, this guy fits that piece. I'm gonna follow him, not because of all the things he's doing, but I'm gonna follow because I hear his voice. And his voice matches what the prophet told us, that matches what, what he had been told about the Messiah. And it said, I know them, and this is the Greek word jeneskum, which is, is it, the easiest way that we can explain this would be, in the intimacy of you knowing your spouse. When Adam knew Eve, it was an intimacy that was not only physical, but there was that emotional, there was, there are all those pieces involved in that, in that marriage relationship, right? And even Jesus, you know, even when he talks about marriage, there's the two become one. It's that intimate. So Jesus is saying, but there is an intimacy with me. And I'll forget who I heard this from, a long time ago in school, but they said intimacy can be broken down into the words into me, see. And so if you think about your spouse, were you and your spouse that connected, where you were finishing each other's sentences, that you were, you knew not only just the favorites, but you, you, you knew like everything, you, you could kind of pre, pre-know how your spouse was going to react in different situations. That was because of the intimacy. And that's the intimacy that God is saying, my sheep have this with me. Right? And then we go to the last word, and it says, and they follow me, and, and I, I've helped mess this word up if I say it. But basically, that's one of the fancy Greek words. But basically, this one is, it's, it's the following to the point of obedience. It's one of those things where, if you think about Abraham, when Abraham was told to sanctify his son Isaac, and he was probably thinking, what? But he still did it, right? And so it's that type thing, that's following, that even if it sounds weird, we're gonna follow what God says. It's easy to follow the easy things. It's hard to follow the crazy things, but God is, or Jesus is saying, my sheep will follow me no matter what. And in the physical aspects of the sheep, remember, I told, I said, I didn't put this in my recap, but we talked about how the sheep always kind of fan out so they can see shepherd. They wanna have their eyes on the shepherd. They wanna be able to follow him wherever he goes. They, it's that trust. Saying, my sheep will do the same thing. They'll fan out and make sure they can follow me, so that I can, wherever I go, they're gonna be following wherever I go. And so I think that's important, and that's a recap of my whole two hundred page book, so there you go. But, but I think it's important for us to kind of dwell on that for a second, because from here, now Jesus is saying, well, look, tell me these, these things that you're gonna stone me for, and they can come back with the answer. We're not gonna stone you for any of the good things. We're happy to do the good things. We're happy by you feeding the five thousand, and, and healing this guy, and all this type of stuff. It's because you came to be the Son of God that they're going to stone. And so I'm gonna give that microphone back to you then.
And then, and then, so, and this is what we get, is the Jews answered it. For a good work, we stone thee not, but for blasphemy. And because that thou, being a man, markest thyself God. So he's telling him he's God, and they're gonna stone him because of that. They're gonna, they're gonna get rid of him because of that. He answered them, answered them, it is not written, and you go, oh, I said, ye are gods. He called them gods unto whom the word of God came, and the scriptures cannot be broken. Say ye of him whom the Father has sanctified, and sent in him the world, that blasphemy, this, because I said, I am the Son of God. If I do not do the works of my Father, believe me not. But if I do, do ye believe not me, believe thy works, that they may know and believe that the Father is in me and I am him. So he's, they, he had that end paragraph. You can, you can talk about it, Daniel. I know you wanna talk about it a little bit. He was saying that, that very last paragraph is, you know, he's telling them, God is in me, the Father is in me. That's how I can do before. If he wasn't here, I couldn't do much at all. So, go ahead, man.
Yeah, well, think about when Jesus was being tempted back in Matthew, chapter four, right? He had the temptation of Christ, and Satan is coming against Jesus with these things, and how does Jesus respond? By using scripture, right? And we have the exact same thing here. They're coming at Jesus and saying, well, it's blasphemy. You called yourself the Son of God. And Jesus says, says, is it not written in your own scriptures that God said, certain leaders of the people, I say you are gods? This is pointing back to, I wrote it down here, Psalm eighty-two, Exodus twenty-one six, and Exodus twenty-two eight through nine, where they are called gods in the aspects of the judge. And so Jesus again is using scripture to combat the evilness that they're throwing on him, just like he did when he was being tempted. And this time we see that Jesus, yes, Jesus does fit the Son of God. We're not gonna debate that. But for them, he's also saying, look, it's not just that I'm the Son of God, but I am a God in the aspect of a judge. And Jesus has the right to judgely, to, to rightly judge us.
And relieve people of their sin. Well, I think that's the most important part of that.
Right.
Relieve, take the sin away from people. I mean, I, you know, when he, you know, by, when he, when he does the blind man, you know, and gives him siding, and, and, you know, it's by his faithfulness that that happens. To Paul, so, or to the father, you know, and, uh, so I, I think it has a lot to do with it too, so.
And, and I'm, and I like how you say that, because when you go back and you look at the people that Jesus healed,
Right.
It wasn't always, oh, you're better now, but he said, your sins are forgiven. So yes, it does go back to the, the, a physical thing, but also a spiritual, that your sins are forgiven.
He's connecting both of them together right there, I think. And it's telling them that, you know, I forgive them their sins. I'm a God. I can do that. I'm, I'm the Son of the Father. I can do that. Someday, we're all gonna stand in front of him, and we're gonna have to answer to Paul. Go ahead. Am I reading or you reading? It doesn't matter.
Are you, are you done talking about that? Absolutely. My notes, I think I am done. I mean, you said everything else.
I'll, I'll finish this here. Therefore they thought again to take him, but he escaped out of their hand, and went away again beyond Jordan in a place where John at, at first baptized, and there he abode. So he was up there where he had baptized, John had baptized, and he was up there hiding, basically, to get away from people. And many stories to him, said, John did not know miracles. All things that John spoke of them were true, and many believed on him there. That's a pretty good word, a pretty good chapter. So, I mean, he, he's actually straining the Jews out, the ones that are non-believers. He's kind of sorting them out right now. Like, you're non-believer, you're believer, you know, he's wanting to believe, but I don't force them to. So.
And it's good for us to think on too, because, and like, like it says here at the very end, John, the, the people are saying, John didn't perform miracles, many, hold on, I'll try that again. John didn't perform miraculous signs, they remarked to one another, but everything he said about this man has come true. And that's what causes them to believe. And I think that we still live in a day and age where this verse is very powerful. Because if people understood that Jesus is the fulfillment of prophecy, it should at least challenge them to contemplate and saying, well, maybe Jesus is the Messiah. And this might be something specific to the Jews. All Jews, Orthodox Jews, don't believe that Jesus was the Messiah. So.
And they still don't believe.
Yeah, and they still don't.
Yeah.
And so, again, it would be something even for us who, who are believers. Do we, do we believe because it was our parents' belief, or do we believe because it's our belief? And if we, if we even took this challenge and looked back at the things that we learned so far about Jesus, what conclusion could we make to ourselves? Is Jesus really the Messiah? If so, have I really accepted him as my Messiah?
He, you know, in our faith, it's gotta be a hundred times more, because it's two thousand years after. So at least these people got to know, to see the miracles and stuff. We have to believe they happened and not see them. So we have our faith that's really, really strong to, you know, really to talk about it. I mean, you know, because Christians are always gonna get crucified no matter what. I mean, you're always gonna get, you know, they just are. It's just the way it goes. That, that the devil's always after the Christians, trying to get them, he wants them to come back to him. He don't want, he don't want us preaching this to people. He don't want people turning, like going to him. So, going to the father. Go ahead, Daniel. Right? And so we're, we're gonna start chapter eleven, and Daniel's gonna give you an overview of chapter eleven, you know, a little bit.
I like.
He's getting ready to wrap it up here.
All right. So in chapter eleven, we are going to see, uh, we're gonna see Lazarus raised from the dead. Couple of things that we have to understand, though, about this. In the Jewish culture, if you were dead for more than three days, they believed that your spirit left you. So they would not have ceremonies, uh, funerals and all that, unless it was after the third day. Because again, in the, in the first three days, your spirit, their belief is your spirit was still circling around and could come back into your body, and boom, you could come back to life. So if it was beyond the third day, then you were dead, dead. Right? And so when Jesus gets to meeting with Lazarus, it's going to be the fourth day. His body's already in the decomposing state. His body stinks, as we're gonna find out from his sister. And Jesus waited on purpose, because if he had come day one, two, or three, they could have said, well, his spirit was just floating around. He wasn't really dead. Jesus just called his spirit back into him. By waiting for the fourth day, Jesus now has done another miracle in their culture, because he has brought this person's whole spirit back from wherever it might have been, and put it back into the man, and he came back to life. And what's interesting about this piece here is that Jesus makes mention that when I do this, it's going to set things into motion. Once we get past chapter eleven, we begin to find ourselves moving into the last few months of Jesus' life. Back when, when he celebrates the, um, I don't think, yeah, when he celebrates the Passover, they're going to come, not only to see Jesus, but to see Lazarus. And there's going to be a whole setup to try and kill Lazarus, so that the Jewish leaders can debunk the fact that Jesus is brought back to life. Oh, then, we can, we just read over really quick. We don't pitch that piece, but they are actually after killing Lazarus also, with a thought to Jesus, because Lazarus is a walking testimony that proves that the Jewish theology is wrong. So.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. When my son passed away, in the corner contact, about the funeral and all that, they set that three days out, four days out. It was always three days, you know? In the funerals I've been going through this year, most of them are three days out. It's kind of, it's kind of ironic that it's like that. And they, they even involved my son the third day, and then we buried him on the fourth day. So it seems like that's three. Now, the funeral, right, this happened in that way, but it sure suspicious, you know? I mean, if that's happened, why did Lazarus does that? So, I mean.
But it also brings, I mean, the testing of theology. But it also brings up the fact that Jesus was dead for three days. His spirit was, if we use that idea, his spirit was still hanging out, and gave back to life on the third day. Proves that he never died.
So, okay, well, so we're gonna start, we'll start reading it here. We'll probably stop. So now, I, now, a certain man was sick named Lazarus of Bethany, the town of Mary and her sister Martha. Who was that Mary, which anointed the Lord with her white man, and wiped his feet with her hair, whose brother Lazarus was sick. Therefore his sister sent out to him, saying, Lord, behold, he whom thou lovest is sick, your dear friend. When Jesus heard that, he said, this sickness is not unto death, but for the glory of God, that the Son of God might be glorified there. This, this is back to testimony and everything else, so that people understand that he's gonna hold off, to make sure that they know this is here.
And again, when he says, this is happening for the glory of God, it's not just the resurrection, but again, this triggers everything that's said in place for what's coming up on the last Passover.
And Jesus loved Martha and his sister, and Lazarus. When he heard, therefore, that he was sick and both two days still in the same place where he was, then after that, saying to his disciples, let us go to Judea again. His disciples saying, um, master of the lake, thou hast stone thee, and Gauss, goest thou hither, hither again. Jesus answered, and there are not twelve hours in the day. If any man walk in the day, he stumbled not, because he sees the light of his world, of this world. But if a man walk in the night, he stumbled, because there is no light in him. Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah. So, a couple of things here. Um, it talks about, what do you want me to? No, you're good.
Yeah.
Um. I'll go back up to verse eight. The disciples objected, Rabbi, they said, only a few days ago, people in Judea were trying to stone you. Are you going there again? And then Jesus says, are there not twelve hours in the day? Jesus is making this comment for two reasons. One, they can travel at night. It would be easy to travel at night, right? But he's also saying, look, the time is getting short. There's only twelve hours of day left. Jesus is referring to, again, knowing what was coming up. He's referring to the fact that my time is getting shorter. We need to get moving. We need to get this done now, because this would really be one of those, maybe last ditch, hail Mary efforts, to get as many people to believe as possible before Jesus is, before Jesus is, is on the cross. And so he's saying, the time is getting short. Twelve hours. Yeah, it's a twenty-four hour day. Great. We got twelve hours. So we are in that final bit to get things, to get as many believers as we possibly can, so that I can, I can, I can take care of them.
And that's what he's talking about. If any man walked in the way, he stumbled not, because he sees the light of this world. And he is the light of this world. So, I mean, that's what he's talking about there. So, I need actually. So, is it, so I'll go to eleven here. It's, uh, chapter eleven, verse eleven. These things say it, he, and after that, say it unto them, our friend Lazarus sleep, sleeps. And I go, that I may, I may awake him out of, out of sleep. Then his disciples, Lord, if he sleeps, he shall do well. Howbeit he has spoken, spoke of his death, but they thought that he had spoken of making rest in sleep. They didn't know he was, he already knew that Lazarus was dead. He didn't, you know, he didn't understand that.
Well, I mean, it makes sense. If you're sick, the best thing to do is rest. So they're thinking, I, you know.
Right. And then, then said Jesus unto them plainly, Lazarus is dead. And I'm glad, for your sake, that I was not there, to a content ye may believe, nevertheless, let us go unto him. Got that a little bit, or you want me to go on?
Go ahead, go on. I'm just talking about time.
Okay. Then said Thomas, which is called, uh,
Dinus.
Dinus, Dinus, unto his fellow disciples, let us go, that we may die with him. Then, when Jesus came, he found that he had lain in the grave four days already. And that's pretty important. That's what Daniel was talking about a while ago. Lazarus is in the grave four days. Now Bethany was nine on Jerusalem, about fifteen furlongs off. So, along the furlong, Daniel.
Well, they estimated, based on if Jesus was walking day to night, that's, they'd taken two days to get.
Two days.
So remember, he found out about it on day two.
Day two, so.
So.
Day two, four, really. And many of the Jews came to Mary to comfort them, to their brother. Then Martha, as soon as she heard that Jesus was coming, waited to meet him, but Mary stayed home in the house. Then said Martha unto Jesus, Lord, if thou had been, been here, my brother had not died. But I know that even now, whosoever thou wilt ask of God, God will give it. She, she has that much faith, because she knows that if she asks him, and if he asks his father, he knows, she knows that he can bring her back to life. That's how much faith she has. And then Jesus said unto her, thy brother shall rise again, rise to life. Martha said unto him, I know that he shall rise again in the resurrection at the last day. So she's talking about the last day for everybody, not just, you know, so, I, I believe, and. And Jesus said unto her, "I am the resurrection and the life. Ye that believe it in me, thou, though ye were dead, yet shall be ye lived." Talk to, let me know.
Yeah, I'm gonna recap some of that for you. So going back up to verse sixteen, where it talks about Thomas. Dinamus in the Greek means twin. And so there's a lot of belief that Thomas looked like Jesus. Alright, like that's, either he had a twin, or he really looked like Jesus. And so if, if we take the fact that he looked like Jesus, this comment is funny. Because it says, Thomas nicknamed the twin or Dinamus, said to his fellow disciples, "Let's go to and die with Jesus." Why would Thomas say, "Let's die with Jesus"? Because if he looked like him, then they very easily could've confused Thomas to Jesus. So Thomas is basically saying, alright, I guess if they take him, they're probably gonna take me, because we look the same, right? So he's putting his life out there as well, and taking the other disciples with him. And that was kind of funny, when I actually realized what all that was talking about. Like, where do they get this from? So, um, and then, so from what John was reading here, notice that Martha comes out, and Jesus has a conversation with Martha. Jesus actually is going to have a conversation with Mary later on. We kind of see this one-on-one communication with each of the sisters, setting them up for, what Jesus is saying is something spiritual about to happen, but what they are understanding still is, it's spiritual, but it's not for right now. And Jesus is saying, no, 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 you're not getting the picture. Because yes, there is this eternity type thing that we've been talking about, and you're right, he's gonna be raised up with the other saints then, but there's also a right now. And I'm about to do the right now, so I need you to stop thinking about the later on. Right? And so when I was talking about this in church, I was mentioning the fact that sometimes we get stuck in this mindset of, Jesus said no. But really, sometimes he's not saying no, he's saying not yet. And when it's time for that not yet to become a now, then stuff like Lazarus happens, where there is this resurrection. And so all these things that we have told God saying no, we need to go back and ask it, is it a no, or is it a not yet? Because it might still be coming when the time is right. It might be four days. It might be four hundred days. But there, there might be some of those not yet's that Jesus is about to say, now's the right time. And that's what he's trying to tell, to tell Martha here. Now is the time. I'm gonna show you. In fact, it goes on, I'm gonna spill your thunder here for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Twenty-three, uh, Jesus told her, "Your brother will rise again." Yes, I know, it's gonna happen, all that. And then twenty-five, Jesus told her, "I am the resurrection and the life. Anyone who believes in me will live, even after dying. Everyone who lives in me and believes in me will never die." Do you believe this, Martha? Or he's asking her as well. Do you believe that I am who I say I am? Because if you do, then you gotta believe that I can do what I say I can do.
And I think her faith is, does believe that. I mean, obviously, she wouldn't run, run Lazarus back. So, but, and that's because of Mary, Martha and Mary's, you know? So, plus, uh, Lazarus was very good friends.
Yes.
That's a good point. So, and let's see. In twenty-seven, she says unto him, "Ye, Lord, I believe that thou art the Christ, the Son of God, which should come into the world." And when she said, she had so said, she went her way and called Mary her sister privately, saying, "The masters come and call it for thee." As soon as she heard that, she rose quickly and came unto him. Now Jesus has not yet come into town, but was in that place where Martha had met. The Jews, the Jews, then, which were with, with her in the house and comfort her, when they saw Mary, that she had rose up hastily, went out, called her, saying, she goeth unto the grave for weeks. So everybody thought she was going to the grave for weeks. They didn't know that she was going for weeks. Talking about resurrection, praying about.
And that goes back to where the disciples, where the disciples saying, hey, was she like, trying to be killed there? They expect, he's not in the city yet. He's on the outskirts having these meetings. So yeah, Mary gets up, and they all assume that she's heading over to the tomb, but really, she's got this excited. Martha's telling her, hey, Jesus is here, let's talk to you. And so that's why it's enough.
And there was no reason for them to believe that she was gonna go beat Jesus. Jesus almost stoned her a couple of weeks prior, so, I mean, nobody would have thought that. I mean, then when Mary was come unto Jesus, was, saw him, she fell down on her knees, saying unto him, "Lord, if thou had been here, my brother had not died." When Jesus therefore saw her weeping, the Jews also with her, which came with her, he was very troubled and said, "Where had ye laid him?" They said unto him, "Lord, come and see." This is the shortest verse in the Bible. Jesus wept. This, this is the shortest verse in the Bible. Eleven thirty-five, Jesus wept. Then, then saith the Jews, "Behold, how he loved him." And some of them said, "Could not this man, which opened the eyes of the blind, have caused that evilness, which not have died?" Jesus therefore, again groaning in himself, coming to the grave. It was a cave of a stone, lay upon him. Are you wanna talk about anything? Yeah, like what really follows this.
Well, no, you're good. So, a couple of different times, we see Jesus making some actions here. So my version says in thirty-three, "Do make your well up within him," Jesus, and he was deeply troubled. Um, and then we see that Jesus wept there, and the last bit you just read, uh, in thirty-eight, Jesus wept. Yeah. Well, Jesus was still angry when he arrived at the tomb. So they, these, I looked these up, because they're not all the same thing. This is the nerd in me. So in the first one here, we have more of this kind of frustration, grunt about the people's lack of faith. It wasn't so much that he was mad that Lazarus was dead, as much as, people don't understand. When are they gonna understand that I can do these things? That they just simply have faith? They, they keep looking at the downside, instead of looking at the positive on this. And there's some frustration building up. Part where it says that Jesus wept, this is a quiet weeping in grief. So yes, Jesus did grieve the physical loss of Lazarus at this moment, which really goes to prove to us, it's okay to grieve, which is like, Jesus was grieving, right? But then, he, and he grieved knowing that he was gonna bring him back to life. That's the point about him. And he was, and I think he was telling everybody, and me and everybody, it's okay, we, we, oh my God, the dad, like that. Yeah. And then that last piece in thirty-eight, it says, Jesus was still angry when he arrived at the tomb. In the Greek, it means snort like a horse. Uh, it was kind of weird, but kind of like, you know, just that, that, that last bit of frustration, almost kind of clearing, clearing his senses, so that he can do what he's supposed to do. Taking the physicalness out of the moment, so that he can do it spiritually, like he's about to do.
Well, yeah, because he was so angry, because they still didn't believe that he could do what he was getting ready to do. And he was frustrated. I mean, very frustrated, so. And I'm sure that he had to control himself not to, you know, not to take it out on him. So, and Jesus, so where are we at, twenty thirty-nine? Uh, Jesus said, "Take ye away the stone." Martha the sister of him that was dead, said unto him, "Lord, by this time he stinketh, for he had been dead for four days." And that's what Daniel was talking about a while ago. So Jesus said to her, "Say I not unto thee that if, if thou wouldst believe, thou shouldst see the glory of God." Then they took away the stone from the place where it was laid, and Jesus lifted up his eyes and said, "Father, I sent thee that thou hast heard me, and I knew that thou hearest me always. But because of the people which stand by, I said, said it, that they may believe that thou hast sent me." You wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, again, when Jesus is praying, I like how he makes this comment. I said it for the people, basically, is what he's saying. Because he's about to do something that he knows he can do, but the people are looking at this as, you know, guy's dead. What are you doing? Wrong, the wrong way, stumbled, gonna think, you know, this is just absolutely crazy. And Jesus is saying this prayer to God, knowing that God hears him, but he says, "I said it for the people. Because what I'm about to do, I want them to understand that this really is a relationship, you and I, God, my Father. We are really in a relationship, and I do what you tell me to do, and I need people to understand our relationship so that they'll do what I'm asking them to do. And, and so, it's a realization, not for God's sake, but for the people's.
This is really, after this miracle's done and stuff, this is really where it starts going downhill for Jesus. So, but he, he has to know that. He, you know, he's already seen that, you know? And so he has to know, that might be some of the frustration in earlier chapters too. And he does this, is really down north from here, you know, kind of thing. So. When, when he's, when he this spoken, he cried with a loud voice, "Lazarus, come forth." And that was to come forth, bound hand and foot with great claws, and his face was bound with napkins. Jesus say unto him, "Let him go." I know back when they buried, they, they put a deal over the face.
Yeah, kind of like a mortification.
Yeah.
And, and so, change, you want me to do this, but it's all in my name. So I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if I agree with all the teaching, because they say, well, he called my name, because if he didn't call my name, then everybody would come out, right? But Jesus again was smart enough to know that how he was moving his feet was going to affect this situation. Um, so I, I see roots in that, but then I'm also like, maybe he called him out because I'm sleeping. Right? And that goes back to where I was talking about with the, the, the yes, the no's, the not yet. Right? Jesus calls, he gives us these different pieces of our life, uh, and tells us, you know, he has a plan for, I'll give you a better way. There's a plan for every part of our life, and those moments have to be called out. And so if in that aspect, I can see why Jesus was specifically for Lazarus, I'm calling you out. And we have to understand that then, in the aspects of us, that again, those not yet's, we might have more than one not yet, but this one specifically is being called for the now. This one over here is still on not yet. And I kind of see this in my own life, because I wanted to be a teacher for so long, but it wasn't the right time. When it was the right time, man, things started moving. I got job offers, like I didn't even apply, and I got a call, and it says, hey, they're applying here. I came in, and five minutes later, the principal was shaking my hand, saying, "We want you to be on part of our team." Right? I, I had never taught before, I'd never done anything. And then same with this job I have now. I don't even remember applying for this job. I really don't. And they called me up, and they said, "You wanna do an interview?" And I said, "Okay, fine." And I got this job, right? So it was those things, when it was the right times, bringing this one forward, calling it forward. But there's other things that God has told me that are still on the not yet. Those, when they're right, are going to be called by name and come out of that grave. And that goes back to this, unwrap it, and let it go.
You know, and we don't, I mean, we can't wrap our heads around, I mean, there's no way we can wrap our heads around, not even a fraction, like Christ or the Father thing. So if you think about this, if the saying in three days, you know, the Jews are talking about the spirit leaving and stuff, let's say that happens, we don't know that that don't happen. Let's say that happens, well, Christ has to pull that spirit back from the afterlife, back to that body. So, I mean, you know, there's a lot there that could happen. I mean, so, we just can't wrap our heads around what, why he had to do what he did there. I don't think, I mean, maybe I'm wrong about it.
Jesus is guy, you know, he's, he's sneaky guy.
So, he was died forty-four?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Then many of the Jews, which came to Mary, and he seen the things which Jesus did, believed on him. So a lot, a lot of people after this, started believing about Christ then. But some of them returned their ways to the Pharisees and told them what things Jesus had done. Chief priests in the Pharisees, the council, and said, "What do we?" Question mark, "For this man, many merit, and we let him thus alone, all men will believe on him, and Romans shall come and take away our place in the nation." And this is where it goes back to Nicodemus and his place in the Pharisees, and, you know, and he's over there to talk to Jesus, because he didn't have his spot in the council, you know, or the head priest, or whatever. And this is the same, that all the priests are sitting there saying, now, wait a second, we're gonna get, right us, if they find out about the spirit, if the Romans find out about it. Which is kind of funny, because, you know, the one Roman, or whoever.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Yeah, yeah.
So, really quick, if you, round just read here, but it talks about, we get the inside scoop of what is happening in the Pharisees' place, and later on, it continues on with Caiphas and all that. So this was a secret conversation. Unless you were part of the high council, we would never have this piece of the Bible. So the fact that we have this, theologians believe that John had one of three resources, and it is how he could've got this secretive information. And so, and that kind of fits where we're gonna go next here. So, there is a thought that Joseph of Arimathea, which is where Jesus' body is going to be later on, later on, later on, um, that he was part of the high council. There was thought that Nicodemus, after everything that happened, and Nicodemus pledged his Christianity or belief in Christ, that he gave John an interview. And then the others believed that there was another Sanhedrin member who basically was an inside spy, who could've given John this information. But the information we're getting about the plot of the right movement, and all this conversation that happened now, should not be in the Bible, because there was no way that John would've had access to the council.
Yeah, he would, he would, oh, yeah. So. "If we let him thus alone, all men will believe on him, and Romans shall come and take away our place in the nation." One of them named, uh, as Caiphas, being the highest, high priest that same year, said unto them, "Ye know nothing at all, nor consider, nor consider that is expedient for us that one man should die for the people, and the whole nation perish not." And he spent, he, he not of himself, but being high priest that year, he upside that Jesus should die for that nation, and not for the nation only, but for also should gather together in one, one of the God that were scattered abroad. That's us. So you know, that's us. So, and then, then from that day forth, they took counsel together, for he put him to death. Jesus therefore walked no more openly among the Jews, but went thus unto a country near the wilderness, and the city called Ephraim, and there continued, spent some time with his disciples. It doesn't really say how, how long.
No, we can kind of put it together, though. Because in chapter ten, we have comments that have been around December, that's ever been in April, so. In that, in that five months.
Five months. The Jews' Passover was nigh at hand, and many went out of the country on to Jerusalem before the Passover to purify themselves. Then sought that they for Jesus and spake among themselves as they stood in the temple. "But thank thee that he will come, will not come to the." Now both the chief priests and the Pharisees had given a commandment, that if any man knew where he were, he should sow it, and, or tell them, that they might take him. So they're looking for him pretty hard. So let's, you wanna start in twelve, you wanna do a little?
I'm gonna do a little, little backup here.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, so, the main point that Caiphas is saying, when they're asking him, All right, so the main point that Caiphas is saying when they're asking him, and he, he actually is friends with Pilate. They've been working together for 11 years is what the history shows. And so he's saying basically, look, we have two choices. We can pick out the guy, or we can have the people take out the temple. Um, and because the temple was such an idol to the Jewish people, really that's what it became. Everything was about the temple. That's where they would get the big, all the people were unclean and all this type of stuff. They looked at it as saying, it's easier for us just to take out the guy instead of letting the guy keep doing his thing. And then it's going to cause the Romans to come in and see that we can handle ourselves here. And then they will remove us from the temple, again, our, our idol and all that. And, and even when Jesus is making mention earlier on, it talks about how destroy this temple and in three days it'll, I'll rebuild it. This fits in with that whole thing, because the, the temple was like the closest thing to God that they could possibly be. And so Caiphas' answer is, let's just find a way to get rid of Jesus. And then that comes into what you were saying at the end here, they're searching for him high and low. They are looking everywhere for him, to the point where Jesus has to resort out into the wilderness for a bit of time. And even at Passover, now they're saying, is he coming? Why, why would they be looking for him? Because Passover was a required feast of all the Jews. They had to come to Jerusalem for that. So they're looking for him. This is going to be a great time for him to be taken in, captured, and do whatever they're going to do to him, because it is a requirement for all the Jews to be here at that time.
So do we want?
Yeah.
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 I'm not going to, we're, we're not going to start in the next chapter till next time. Chapter twelve will be the start for next, because it's a pretty good chapter.
Yeah, we're going to talk about the others. And.
Okay, so, uh, you want to give kind of a recap of eleven real fast? I guess we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll give a recap of what happened in eleven, so we kind of know where we're at starting twelve next time and finish.
All right, so overall, what we have found today was, again, the, a couple, a couple takeaways. The first one would be, are we, because again, it talks about those three qualifications. My sheep hear my voice, I know them, they follow me, they obey what I'm asking them to do. We have to ask ourselves, are we a sheep? Because the option, like John was saying earlier, the only other option is a goat. And if we go into the latter part of, uh, uh, I think it's the Book, the Book of Luke, he's talking about the fact of there are sheep and there are goat. And the sheep are the ones that I say, come on in. And the goats are the ones that I say, anyway, I don't know you. Are we a sheep or are we a goat? I think that's one of the, the first takeaways we have to consider. Secondly, what we learned today, going back to.
And so I want to throw something in here. If, it's not to say that if you're a goat, you can't be a sheep.
Right.
Okay, so I don't want to mis, mislead them here. So you could be, you could be a sheep at any time. You know, you just have to give your life to Christ and, and believe body, mind, and soul for that, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, I'm glad you clarified that. Yeah, because that falls into what Paul writes about. What does it take to be a sheep? Well, I mean, Jesus gives us his things, but that relationship starts with what Paul wrote about in Romans nine, ten, and that's what it's 10, nine, and 10. Where if we believe you, if we confess that he is Lord, we believe in our heart that God raised him from the dead. We believe that Jesus is who the Bible says he is, we confess him as our Lord. That is that entrance into the relationship with, with Jesus. And then from there, doing what he's asking us to do, making those decisions based on his leading. That, that is entrance into. Um, we talked about Lazarus. We talked about just the whole miracle of Lazarus being raised from the dead on a day when their culture said his spirit is no longer around. And yet God called, Jesus calls his spirit back to the man and raises him out of the tomb. And how, again, there's, there's going to be times in our life when we are going to be Lazarus, when something is going to be called back and we're going to walk out of what seemed like a dead situation, because it's not time for us to be removed from that position. It wasn't Lazarus' time, it really wasn't. That's, and Jesus calls him back as a result of that. And those lost dreams, he's got to pull those back. Even at your age, I know it seems a little weird. I mean, I can say that at my age, because I'm still a little bit younger. But it doesn't mean that the things that he told you back when you were a kid still can't come true. They've been sitting on the not-yets, but they're about to be the yes, now's the time.
And even after we're gone, prayers don't go away. So they get answered whether we're here or not. So that prayer for me, for twenty years, I, I didn't say nothing about Christ I wanted to be around or anything. I mean, I did, but not fully. I wanted to be half and half, you know, and that's not the way it works. So, uh, like, and, and when he passed away before he ever stood and come to Christ, I did. So, I mean, I know that prayer was angry. I pray for my kids and hopefully you all pray for your kids and friends that, and everything, and want them to come to Christ too. Because the way the world's getting right now, we all need that. So.
And Dr. Jeremiah, I, I don't know if you all listen to him, I've been listening the last couple of years, I guess, morning on my way to work. But this last week, he said something that really struck me. He said, you know, even after you pass away, your legacy continues on. So why, he's doing a study on the book Revelation. So he's like, why is not the judgment until Jesus comes? Why don't we get judged right when he passed away? And he said, it's because the legacy that we left behind is still in motion, right? So you go back to who's greater, the guy who led Billy Graham to Christ or Billy Graham? Right? Well, both would be the exact same. Because the guy who led Billy Graham to Christ left a legacy in Billy Graham. Billy Graham has left legacies, and legacies, and legacies. And that's going to continue to trickle on, because maybe your great, 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 great grandpa was saved at a Billy Graham crusade, and that has trickled on to you and trickled on to, to your family line. And you are still part of that. So even after we are gone, the legacy that we leave behind still has so much weight.
And when we start that, you know, we start a Christian legacy, you know what I'm saying? If, if you think about it. So like with my kids, my son and daughter don't believe. I mean, my, my daughter does, but my, his, her husband doesn't, he's an atheist, so he doesn't believe in Christ. And, you know, all I can do is pray for them, but if I would then believe in Christ, I wouldn't pray for them. So I'm trying to stop that, I'm trying to stop that, that legacy or start that legacy. My dad started it with me. It took me a while, you know, and maybe that time span will be shorter for my daughter that she finds Christ, or my son-in-law, or my son, you know, maybe that, as they have kids, maybe they'll be shorter. And finally, we're to the point where their race is a Christian family, you know. So, and hopefully time don't run out before that. And I think it's why Christ says, time is short. I mean, you, it's long, I think he's talking from our birthright back till now, like he was talking about. I mean, I don't know how many Christians I had in my family prior to this, but I would say, I mean, I mean, my, my grandma was a, I guess she was, she wasn't, she turned Christian, but you know, she was later on in life. She was younger, she was older than my dad, and my dad was younger than her when it happened. And now I'm younger than my dad when it happened. I think that's possible, you know, it happened, so I'm, I'm hoping my kids find Christ and according to what happened, so. And eventually, I think it gets to a point where they're getting raised in the Christian faith and, and family all the time. So you get to that point, broke that, that spell.
Yeah.
Or broke that curse, basically, so it was a curse to not find Christ.
Oh, you're good. And that really just fits into the last point that I would say for us to take home. When Jesus said, there are twelve hours in the day, referring to the time getting short for him. But I think it's also a challenge to us, the twelve hours in the day, our time getting short. What are we going to do in that last bit of time we have? Are we going to share the gospel with others? Are we going to try, just like Jesus did, to get as many people to believe in Jesus in that final bit? This is our twelve hours in a day. What have we got to do with it?
Now, if you remember my testimony back when I first came to the very first day, that I, my life had been spared a few times. I should have died, I did. Maybe it was just that one person that I needed to talk to, to convince them that, and he might be going to change 500 different people like Billy Graham, you know? You just don't know. We don't see them veins, and veins going out into the world. Uh, you touch somebody, you don't hear about it till 20 years later, that, man, he touched you 20 years ago. You don't know if he did, just your testimony or whatever.
I'm done, that was it.
So let's pray real quick and be done for today. Thank you, Father, for everything you've done for us. Please, all the people here now, and the people over at the nursing home and out of the village, let them know that you're with them all day, every day. Now they're going to be, reach out and touch you, reach out and ask for your help. And you'll be there, show them the blessings you can give them, the good time that they can give. In Jesus' name, amen. Thanks. See you in two weeks. I said, thank you, we'll see you in two weeks. Yeah, no problem. The wall, Daniel. It's a good one, though. I think. Have you on the camera the whole time?
I like you looking at me like.